Okay, folks, it is six o'clock. It is Tuesday, February 11th, and we are in the Platteville City Hall, and I am calling the regularly scheduled meeting of the Common Council to order. Colette will start with roll call.
Bob Gates.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Tom Knoll.
Here.
Lynn Parrott.
Here.
Kathy Kopp.
Here.
Todd Casper's excused. And Barbara Doss.
Here. The first thing on our agenda tonight is a special presentation from the Platteville Area Industrial Development Corporation, and I invite Abby Haas, the executive director, to come forward and make her presentation.
Thank you for having me tonight, guys. I appreciate it.
Is the microphone not there?
Is it?
Oh, there we go.
Now good.
Uh, put by your, yeah.
Closer.
Okay.
There you go. Um, I just prepared a kind of shorter, uh, ten thousand feet view overview of, uh, the Platteville Area Industrial Development Corporation and our highlights, um, from 2024. Uh, so at the beginning of each year, end of the year, we, uh, set some overarching goals, um, for the corporation. Uh, four of those this year were to create a new website, complete, um, our 501(c)(3) status, map all available lots, uh, not just within the industrial park, but, uh, the city of Platteville, and to review and update the land price formula that we do use in the industrial park in the Tiff District. Um, so we did accomplish all of those goals, and I'll go through those, and then some additional accomplishments that I wanted to highlight as well. Um, we did eleven state bid requests. What that means is Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, uh, sends out requests, uh, throughout the year, and we were able to fit the criteria and respond to eleven of those, um, which is good. The ones that we weren't able to respond to were usually hundred thousand square foot buildings, um, that they already wanted in place, or that they had infrastructure needs that were beyond our capacity, usually with electrical, um, grid or high, high wastewater. Um, the other prospects that we have had more locally and not through WDC, we had a hotel development, uh, that, uh, we have worked with in 2024, three multifamily housing developers, and fifteen, um, industrial slash commercial development inquiries that were, um, beyond what WEDC, uh, sends us. Uh, we also sold five acres of land in the industrial park, as well as the first right of refusal on the adjacent 5.31 acres. Um, the Honeywell Building sold in 2024. Uh, and it is currently in the process of, um, the application and approval process of an idle sites redevelopment grant, um, which would get them, uh, $250,000 for improvements in that building. Um, and then we also assisted with the UW Platteville Senior Engineering Project, uh, looking at additional industrial commercial land development. Uh, so the new website that, uh, I talked about is one of the goals. You can see a screenshot of it here. Uh, basically redid the website that had kind of been the same, I don't know how long. Uh, made it mobile friendly, uh, more concise, easy to read information, added a mapping tool, added links to the city of Platteville ordinances out from it, uh, added a drone video highlighting our industrial park as well, um, that Grant County Economic Development helped fund. Uh, we, uh, have the mapping tool on there as well. Um, and that mapping tool shows, uh, developers exactly where we have land that is, uh, available for development. Um, 501(c)(3) status we accomplished in August of 2024. Um, and that was like a nine-month process, and it is actually retroactive to the entire 2024, um, calendar year. So we are now a 501(c)(3). I believe they had started that process at one time in the past to get that. Uh, it's a lot of work. It takes a long time. Um, so kind of glad that we finally crossed, crossed that finish line. Um, that'll help with any taxes, um, and things like that in the future. Um, so just a good thing all around. Um, we worked with Regional Planning Commission, as I said before, to map available lots, uh, within the city of Platteville. So you can see a screenshot as well of that project. Uh, when you click on each of these lots, it also gives you the owner information as well as my contact information, uh, so that individuals that are interested in these lots can easily contact myself if they, um, would like more information. It talks about, uh, whether or not they have infrastructure up to them as well. Uh, the blue versus the green versus the yellow, um, has to do with zoning, as well as whether it is city-owned or privately held. Uh, it also lets you know whether that, um, land is in a Tiff District. Um, so we reviewed and updated the land price formula as well. Uh, the land price formula we were using did not reflect today's costs of construction. Uh, so we needed to change the list price per acre from $67,500. Uh, we, uh, ended up at $175,000 per acre for the list price. Uh, we changed the job incentive levels. Uh, there used to be four tiers, um, of different job levels. We changed that to a single tier of $20, um, per hour plus job excluding benefits to get you the $2,000 incentive, uh, for that job. It was, uh, a little murkier before. We were giving a thousand dollar incentive at, I believe, $15 an hour and so on and so forth. So this is just a way to kind of clean that up, make it easier, as well as continue to provide an incentive for those better paying jobs. Um, we, uh, changed the improvement incentive for our, from $4,000 per $10,000 of over $250,000 of construction to $5,000 per $10,000, over $1 million. So basically, uh, we're not seeing $250,000 buildings built anymore. Um, the cost of construction has grown exponentially. So really, any projects that we would be seeing in the industrial park would probably be over a million dollars. Um, so this would still allow for the incentive, um, at that point. Um, so basically, this equates to 1.35, $1,350,000 of improvements on an acre parcel would get you the land for a dollar. Or, uh, two, two million 750,000 of improvements on a five-acre parcel to get the land for a dollar. So those are, um, right in line with our cost of construction per square foot. Um, still trying to, um, ensure that our developers are able to get the land for a dollar per acre, um, and making sure that the right-sized building is put on each of those lots. For our senior design project, uh, they looked at adjacent property to the industrial park and what that would look like and the costs associated with that, um, on developing that for this year. Um, they focused on the design of new infrastructure on Enterprise Drive. Um, the project goals included industrial and commercial land, uh, a combination of it, designing roadways, sewer and water management, as well as cost estimates for the project. Uh, the project was a hundred acres in total. Uh, they ended up with 20% of it being commercial, with 80% of it being, uh, industrial, .9 miles of roadway, and it had a box culver instead of a bridge. Uh, so if you look at the map, you can kind of see this is across from Southwest Health Center. Um, and if anyone wants a full copy of that presentation, happy to get them that. Uh, the Platteville Industrial Warehouse, this is, um, formerly Honeywell. Uh, again, they are in the process of getting approval for an idle sites redevelopment grant. Uh, their plan is basically to take the 43,000 square feet that is the warehouse currently and divide it into six leasable spaces. Um, these spaces can be combined. You could use two of them, you could use three of them, you could use one of them, uh, but just more manageable size for the industry that we are seeing in Platteville, and hopefully fits the needs of more businesses within our area. Uh, we've had a lot of inquiries there, and I believe he has one, uh, business leasing space already. Uh, Frieza is who purchased lot number 44, uh, the yellow, uh, parcel that you see here. It's five acres on the corner of East Side there. Uh, they also have the first right of refusal on the adjacent, um, five-acre parcel. It is going to be a cold storage, uh, facility with also packaging of meat and cheese and a small retail, um, shop. Construction is in progress now and, uh, still on schedule. Upcoming in 2025, uh, currently, we have two dairy prospects that we have been meeting with. Uh, we have one multifamily home prospect. Uh, I am currently working on co-leading the ladies leadership of Southwest Wisconsin. We are increasing marketing for the lots that we do have available, as well as marketing of Platteville in general. Um, we also are working on planning for future land development, uh, including any underdeveloped lots, and then identifying specific target industries for Platteville. Uh, we have a lot of dairy in Platteville. Um, it takes up a lot of wastewater capacity. So looking at what other industries might be a good fit for our community that maybe don't have quite so strenuous of requirements. Any questions?
Questions? Abby, just, do you have an approximate number for how many employees are in and work in the industrial park? A long time ago, we heard a number.
I don't have that.
You don't.
I'm sorry. I can survey and have.
Great.
I can ask them for, um, I can send out a survey to all the employers. That's a great idea. I have not done that.
Thank you.
Yep. Awesome.
Okay, other questions?
Maybe I'm missing this, but about across the road, across Business 151.
You mean south of town?
No, going out toward Belmont, that way. You get involved on that portion?
No, I haven't been involved on anything in the township at this time. Um.
But I'm talking about.
On the, like, behind Goodwill.
Yeah, Goodwill.
Yep.
I'm moving this way on Business 151.
Yep, uh, so all of the properties in the retail, um, a lot of the retail was already completed, uh, before I started for those projects that you see, including like the Car Wash, Starbucks, and those ones, that had already been in progress before I started. Um, I believe Joe handled most of those. But, uh, the privately held land that is around Goodwill, um, I've actually worked, um, with three different developers on projects that may or may not come to fruition there. Some of them are pending, um, WEDA tax credits, um, which is what you guys used on the library project, and you guys know that can take a very long time. Uh, so yes, that land, um, is marketed. Uh, I help and assist with that. It is in a Tiff District. Um, but the private landowner also, uh, works on it himself.
Okay, other questions? Okay, Abby, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Now going on with the rest of our, uh, agenda, the first item then, the next item on our agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. Uh, all can be approved on a single motion due to their, uh, routine nature. If you want a separate discussion, let me know. We have the council minutes from January 28th, payment to bills. We have the financial report for January. I have no appointments to boards and commissions tonight, uh, licenses. We have one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell, sell alcohol, as well as taxi driver licenses.
I move to approve all items listed under consent agenda.
Barb, I have a question.
What?
On, on this. I, I was just, when I was reading the financial reports, I noticed, you know, everybody has money taken out for health insurance. And I didn't know if the city has ever had the option of an opt-out for health insurance, because it would, you know, if our insurer would allow that, it would save the city money. And that way, if someone who's employed by the city has a, a spouse who has insurance outside of the, the city, say through the university or school district or something like that, and they could be on that, on their spouse's insurance, it would save the city quite a bit of money if they would allow that person to opt out and then pay them so much cash monthly, but a lot less than what insurance would cost.
Do you want me to answer that? Um, yeah. So the insurance plan currently does not. We don't offer an opt-out right now, but the Human Resources Manager, Chad Wilson, is very in tune to those types of options. In this next year, we plan on exploring options specifically like that and potentially entertaining such as we go forward into 2026.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Uh, Colette will vote.
Gates.
Yes.
Killian. Knoll.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I've had no one, uh, asked to speak, uh, from the audience. I have had two council people asked to speak, and so I'll first call on Kathy Kopp.
I just wanted to, um, make sure everyone was aware, um, that very tragically over the weekend, we lost, um, a young man by the name of Dylan Bellamy, age 22, who was a Grant County Correctional Officer. He was killed down in Illinois while he was training with the National Guard. And upcoming, nice, young, uh, lots of potential. Um, and it has really, um, caused the department, the county, both the jail and the sheriff's department, um, it's pretty emotional for them. So I just would like to acknowledge his service and, um, just also acknowledge that we need to keep his family and friends and all of those that he worked with in the county in our thoughts.
And Tom Knoll. Sure.
Give me a, try to get my reading classes. This evening, I'm here on the eve of Abraham Lincoln's birthday. Now, I'd like to read to you a speech that Abraham Lincoln gave in 1863. I think it means a lot to many people. So I'll read it as he presented it. "Fourscore and seven years ago, our fathers brought forth on this continent a new nation, conceived in liberty, dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal. Now we are engaged in a great civil war, testing whether that nation, or any nation so conceived and so dedicated, can long endure. We are met on a great battlefield of that war. We have come to dedicate a portion of that field as a final resting place for those here who gave their lives that that nation might live. Is altogether fitting and proper that we should do this. But in a larger sense, we cannot dedicate, we cannot consecrate, we cannot hallow this ground. The brave men, living and dead, who struggled here, have consecrated it far above our poor power to add or detract. The world will lit little note, nor long remember what we have here to say, but it can never forget what they did here. Is for us, the living, rather than to be dedicated here to unfurnished, unfinished work which they fought here, have thus far so nobly advanced. It is rather for us to be here dedicated to the great task remaining before us, that from these honored dead, we take increased devotion to that cause which they gave the last full measure of devotion. That we here highly resolve that these dead shall have not died in vain, that this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from the earth. Along with this, I have to address the audience, citizens of Platteville, to understand that many people can be part of government without being government employees. We at the city have number of commissions, committees, and boards that we really need citizens of Platteville to be part of. And it needs for them to realize, for everyone to realize, that we as a governing body cannot really do the best job for the community unless we have community input. That means people contributing their thoughts and their wishes on what happens in our community. So I ask you, are you going to do? Or are you not going to do? What is your will? If you don't, who will? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. You make an incredible point that it is of the people, by the people, and for the people, and we can use volunteers on many boards, commissions, and committees. And it's a pretty easy process to get involved. I'm sure that Jody puts out a, uh, note on occasion about that, and, uh, there's an application online, and it's a pretty easy application. You have to do things like give your name and your contact information and what you're interested in. All right, any other comments? Oh, the other thing I had put on your desk tonight, I, in the, uh, January 29th, uh, Platteville Journal, uh, there was a listing of Grant, Iowa, and Lafayette County 2024 property tax rates. And then there was a column that listed the, uh, taxes on a $240,000 home for all of the townships, all of the cities, all of the villages, et cetera. So, uh, sometimes, uh, when we're, uh, when we're challenged and we say it's, uh, like Platteville has the highest taxes around, I think if you look at this, you can see that that's, that's really not the case. Uh, not, really not the case. So I would, uh, suggest that you keep this as a reminder, uh, as to, uh, the value that we're getting for our tax dollar, perhaps, uh, when you, when we look at others. All right, and reports are in your packet tonight. Uh, the Airport Commission Report, Bob, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Uh, Parks?
I have a question.
Oh, on the Airport Commission Report?
Airport, uh, I read it, and it's just a question about, uh, the manager's report talks about, uh, the fuel, fuel sales, fuel sales were down. And so they had, um, it says the PC died. So PC stands for what, Bob?
It's personal computer.
What?
Personal computer.
Personal computer died on Friday night. Okay.
Okay.
So that's one thing.
Do you have more on the Airport Commission?
No, nothing.
Okay.
Nothing.
Parks Recreation, Parks Forestry and Recreation, Bob. Next committee. Okay, Housing Authority, I have nothing additional to add. Uh, Police and Fire Commission, Kathy?
Nothing to add.
Okay, uh, other reports in your packet, the Water and Sewer Financial Report for January, the April, or the, pardon me, Airport Financial Report for January, the CIP Quarterly Status Report for the end of the year. That would be, uh, through 12/31/2024, and the Department Progress Reports. Questions on these?
Well, if I can find them, um, progress report. There we go. But, oh, Nicola is not here. But anyway, as far as, um, report was one thing. And going to, let's see, City Manager. Okay, I got the City Manager. And there's on, there's not a page of mine. And it says support, support Parks, Forestry, and Recreation on a remedy for stone shelter doors in Smith Park. So supposedly those doors were put in new when the stone shelter was remodeled. So what is happening? What is wrong with the doors?
So, uh, in speaking with our engineers and with our contractors that put them in, um, there's further investigation going into what's going into them, but it appears from the preliminary types of looks in it where there might be situations where users are not necessarily vandalizing the doors, but because the door opens and closes slowly, they may be forcing it closed, and it's shearing off some of the, the pins that kind of control it. And working with Delta 3 and with J Squared, um, who put in the, the openings, I think they're looking, working with the subcontract out of Dubuque to see if there is a way to put like pressure release type of a system where if, um, the door's not closing, and, and I get it, if you're going in there and you're, you've got to get to the bathroom right now, waiting for that door to close, so you feel like you've got privacy to, to do your business, um, there might be a pressure release type of a system where if they're pulling on it, it can disengage and close faster, I think, is where we're currently at on it. So it's an active type of a thing that we're hoping to sort out and have a remedy in place. Be park season in the spring.
Do you, do you have, um, to use any cameras in the area there to take pictures of what's going on at that particular location?
Multiple cameras at the park. I, offhand, I don't know where all the views are, and certainly we have to be careful about getting cameras too close to seeing what's going on inside of bathrooms, but there are cameras up there.
But do you take pictures of the doors?
I would have to reference, Ken, I don't have the data. I, I haven't looked at camera footage suggesting when the, when the doors are getting.
Well, well, my question, I'll go back. My question is, are cameras being used at Smith Park?
Yes, there's cameras at Smith Park, Ken.
And so they're being used for different locations?
Yeah, I, I'm unfamiliar exactly with what the layout and what those cameras are looking at. I understand where you're going though on, is there a view from a camera that would show what's happening to a door? And I don't have that answer for you right now.
Maybe I can help a little bit here. Uh, Ken, that, you can see the side angles, and we have used them when vandalism has occurred actually in the bathroom. So, but remember, the process to view the cameras, footage, right? We have to see it within a certain time if it's actually. We have to see it within a certain time if it's actually damage or something has happened so that we can report it to the PDs, and then they have to go through back and review all the camera work. So it's quite a process. So until we can actually see there is actual damage or vandalism or something, for something for them to view, there's not somebody sitting there watching the cameras run all the city cameras 24/7, especially in a park. So yes, you can kind of see, and we have been successful when we know there has been vandalism in the bathroom. Does that help? But you can't, every door that, somebody pushes the door, I mean, every time somebody go into the bathroom, nobody is watching that when there's thousands of kids that use that bathroom.
But I'll ask the City Manager, how many cameras do we have in the city? So we have cameras at different locations, so we have.
I apologize, Mr. Killian. Perhaps next time you can let me know that you have these prior to we get to the meeting, and we can bring the information forward. I don't have a camera count for you right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other on Department Progress Reports? If not, then we'll go on to our action item tonight. This is awarding an Aquatic Center architect and engineering contract for Phase One Schematics for the swimming pool.
Madam President, the City of Platteville received responses from multiple companies from Architectural and Engineering Design Services for the replacement of an Aquatic Center. As we intended, we intend to engage with an architect, engineer, or an A and E in the development of schematic drawings of a replacement facility with estimated schematic budget in preparation for the referendum in April of 2025. All fairness, of course, voting is open for the, for that question right now. Further planning and detailed engineering design, sorry, I misspoke, for the referendum in April. Further planning and detailed engineering design work will not commence until the results of the referendum in April are considered by the Common Council. I will let Bob kind of explain on the details of it, but tonight, the premise that we're going to be entertaining is, after a thorough review of the qualifications proposed, interviews, contact with references, the City Manager, myself recommends that the contract be awarded to JEO for the Stage One Schematic Development. Throughout the evaluation process, JEO demonstrated a strong understanding of Platteville's unique needs and showed a focused approach of delivering a high-quality, durable pool that fits within a $6.9 million budget goal. This recommendation was not arrived at lightly. Both finalists have exceptional credentials and local ties, while Burbach offered a solid reputation for structurally stability and has a strong local presence. JEO presented comparable options at a more competitive cost, especially at the Stage One Schematics. JEO's lead, Mr. Andrew Penneycamp, who has joined us here this evening, is a local resident with ties to the community, confident that JEO will provide a quality service in preparing schematics. And if the council decides to progress following the referendum, JEO will design and oversee the construction of a quality aquatic center. I would turn it over to Bob for further comments and introduction of Andy.
Thank you. I just would say this was quite a thorough process. And I laid it out in the progress report, a little more detail than I normally would, so that council could kind of follow along just how intense that progress was to come to our final, what am I going to say, to come to JEO as our finalist. We in fact interviewed, we had a panel, we interviewed three, and then we had follow-up questions for them, and then we brought back two more. And then Clint and I interviewed them again. So it's been a thorough vetting, and we believe that JEO is the right choice. And if you have any questions, other than what I had presented here, I would entertain any questions. Otherwise, I did ask Andy to come tonight, and if you had direct questions for him, he would gladly respond.
Okay, questions?
I have.
Okay.
I have a question. I read these over, and I believe I read that they want to use piers, posts. Am I correct?
This is phase, this is for Phase One,
Yes.
which are the schematics, right? This is not for design.
But I went through.
I understand.
Went through all this reading as far as was W, that was done back in January. So is it correct you're going to use posts or is that in limbo yet? Because I read that.
Andy's starting introducing himself.
Some of these things are residium, you got luss, you got fat clay, and they just go on and on with the list. And so originally, we came up, we heard that you're going to use a layer of sand material. And now I hear about the posts. Is that?
I guess I would ask, Ken, you need to clear about you hear about. Are you saying you read it in the borings, or you read it in the Aquatic Engineering RFQ Proposals?
And the list in here that I'm going through.
Yeah, so I'm Andy Penneycamp with JEO Consulting Group. Platteville resident, as mentioned. Yeah, so there's a couple, I think you're referring to some questions that were asked about how to build this facility. And I mean, essentially, we're looking at all these ideas, piers is one of them. You know, taking out the luss soil is another one, and replacing it with a good granular base that would support the structure. So we're looking at all those options and using the geotechnical report from CVT to determine that, and that's all part of this initial stage is looking at the information and coming up with what design fits best structurally as well as conceptually for the community. So when I say conceptually, I mean, are there lanes? Is there a slide? What features are being included? So all that'll be reviewed, Andy, on that first stage.
The next question I have is, has your company built pools nearby? In a vicinity, say 50, 100 miles of Platteville? And then the next question is, did any of the committee visit those pool?
I don't think the committee visited any of those pools. We've got a couple pools within that range, I would say. JEO, the background is, we started as municipal engineers in Nebraska, and since then have grown to Iowa and Kansas and Eastern Iowa now as well. So the range is growing. We're about 450 people now within the firm. So essentially, I would say we have a couple within that range. I worked at a different company for many years and had more local presence in those pools as well. So, and I think the committee was familiar with those, and our design techniques are very similar. You know, some, a lot of the processes are the same, and equipment, mechanical equipments pretty standardized.
The current pool was built, was it 96, correct?
Yes.
93?
My wife and I last drove on here. We've been around and visited a number of different pools around here.
And you know.
Trying to find out what's going on.
Okay, other questions?
Just want to ask, because when it gets time for the motion, all along we've been talking about for this phase to have a cap of 20,000. What is looking at authorizing a contingency not to exceed 30,000? Conceivably, what, in a conceptual design, what could happen that we would need another $10,000?
So I can answer that. We plan on putting together guidance-type team like we did with the fire facility, so that we had some folks that are, it's not just Bob and I making these decisions, that we have folks representing the council and the things, is we're building this and trying to lay out a schematic design and schematic budget. If we have, you know, other opportunities that come up either with 3D renderings, or we want to bolster efforts for community engagement, hey, you know what, we really need to have two meetings with the public because we are getting some conflicting views on here, that it would give the City Manager some maneuverability without having to come back to the council for approval on those, as we are kind of hitting a compressed time window to try to get this together and put out to the public before referendum in April. That's the thoughts behind. But I certainly appreciate that we kind of are looking for a $20 goal or $20,000 schematic physically responsible prior to the city committing to a project.
Okay, additional questions?
Excuse me. I don't think Andy wanted to say a whole lot about pools, but Ken, when you were asking about pools nearby, he was the designer for a number, probably at least five pools within that miles, mileage radius that you were talking about. And so we've seen those pools.
And I might add that, Ken, I also, they provided a list of references. And I was particularly, because the Parks Committee had seen a lot of local pools that Andy had actually been part of. And I was a little more particularly interested in those pools that are 20 years old. I'm interested in what they built a long time ago comparable our pool, and how are those pools holding up? So I called and talked to two or three different city managers. And all of those pools are 20 years old. And because this would have been prior to Andy, and I was very interested in what is the long-term portion of this company? Because I think that is one of the mistakes that was made when the previous pool was built. And I had a rarely good report back from all of those city managers. So that really boosted my confidence in it.
Well, I guess the question I have is, what caused this pool to leak, the cracks? You know? No, I looked at all that information, and you wonder, now what's built that's going to prevent the cracking from taking place?
Yeah. So the leaking is, I would say it's a combination of things that happened with that pool. Design techniques played a part, for sure. Construction quality, I think, played a part in that as well. And then over time, those complications led to bigger leaks, which then leads to bigger issues. And unfortunately, the ultimate failure is that it settled. Settled in the tune of two to three inches, which is pretty drastic, that differential settlement from the deeper areas to that zero-depth area. So then, that's what resulted then in the cracking, is that, you know, this side of the pool didn't move, but this side did. And somewhere in between, something's got to give. So yeah, the combination of, I guess it's a death by a thousand cuts here, essentially, is what happened with that pool. And so when you design that today, is really what you're getting at, is making sure that, number one, your design techniques are made in a manner that it's going to account for some contractor error. Construction oversight's another critical part of this, to make sure the contractor is following those specs, specifications, and the design intent. And then also looking at soils underneath and understanding that that luss layer of soil is an issue and addressing that. When you look at the original construction plans and then look at the soil borings, it looks somewhat intentional that the designer left that layer of soil in there. I don't know what their discussions were, if they thought it was deep enough that it wouldn't impact the pool over. But I think that was a critical mistake on their part. And in the deeper end, when you look at the soil borings in the geotechnical report, that layer of soil is gone. That is because of the depth of the pool, and the excavation required that removal. So, yeah, so addressing all those, looking at all the different elements, bringing it together, and and creating a longer-lasting, and when I say longer-lasting, we're looking at building something that's here 50 to 100 years from now, which isn't unheard of for a concrete structure, so.
What I think about here is the pool is designed, and so then in the winter, the water is removed. And so now in the winter, the freezing is going to be going down into the area. And so you're trying to make how much of the area resistant to change in as far as bearing load or whatever word you're using. And I'm a soil scientist, and so your use of the word soil means something to me. But there's a lot of different things that are underneath this whole pool area. And it's sort of like my house. I have a house with a driveway, so the driveway lifts because I have clay underneath it. Well, then my footing underneath the house settles because some dumb person put a gas tank underneath the footing, which meant that the footing settled. So you have a tremendous, to me, it's a tremendous difference you have among materials that you're going to be working with.
Right, yeah, and we're, we'll design that to get down to more of a uniform material. And whether that's piers down to bedrock, or if we're replacing layers of soil and placing granular material in there. Essentially, we're either making a bridge that connects to your clay soils below a frost depth. We'd also be putting under drains in to keep any groundwater from, you know, penetrating into that layer. So it wouldn't end up frosty. We also go down to a depth that's typically below frost depth so that you're not having that hating occurring. Yeah, so part of that, that stage one is analyzing all the documents and coming up with a good structural plan for the pool.
And so to me, there's a lot of material. You got luss or lurs, or however you want to pronounce it, and residium, and you got, you were talking about fat clay, and I was kind of curious what fat clay, what that's like versus, you know, siloem from, say, good residium, not residium, but siloem, luss, which is a tremendous good material around here as far as soil for crop production. Anyway, those are things that I just kept wondering about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay.
Second to the motion.
Let me do it first. Let me, let me, okay, I got this. I move to authorize the City Manager to develop and enter into a contract with JEO and associate firms for Phase One Schematics of a Replacement Aquatic Center at an anticipated cost of $20,000 with authorized contingency for scope changes not to exceed $30,000.
And I think Ken seconded that before she offered the motion. So we do have a motion and a second. So Colette will vote.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Hop?
I abstain due to a conflict of interest.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right. All right. Right, all right. Welcome aboard, Andy. All right, now let's move on to the information and discussion part of our agenda. This is ordinance to establish a board, a board of absentee ballot canvassers at a central count location in the city of Platteville. And I believe, Colette, that's you.
That's me. So more citizens are choosing to vote absentee instead of voting at the polls. Wisconsin law allows citizens to vote absentee without providing a reason. And the city has experienced both an increase in male and absentee voters as well as an increase in voters choosing to complete their absentee ballot in person at City Hall prior to Election Day. Currently, all absentee ballots are sorted by district and ward and then delivered to the appropriate polling locations on Election Day, at which time poll workers begin to process the absentee ballots. Two poll workers are required to process every absentee ballot received at the polling place. The poll workers must check the ballot envelope for defects or omissions, announce the voter's name and address, check in the voter on the Badger Book, open the envelope, and insert the absentee ballots into the tabulator. Poll workers often have to disrupt voters who vote in person at the polls on Election Day by creating lines at the check-in table and the tabulator. The November general election was extremely busy. The absentee processing slowed the lines due to processing the absentee ballots through the Badger Books and then having to insert the ballots into these tabulators and stopping the line if there was an issue with the absentee ballot, such as a misread and overvoter or jam. This places an enormous challenge on the chief inspectors to keep track of the absentee processing while trying to maintain in-person voting efficiency. Chief inspectors have expressed concern over reconciling numbers on the tabulators due to the disruption created by absentee ballot processing. Wisconsin statutes 7.52 and 7.53, parent 2, parent M, allow for the creation of a board of absentee ballot canvassers. These individuals are appointed by the city clerk to serve two-year terms. The Board of Absentee Ballot Canvassers process all absentee ballots in the city on Election Day at a central location. To create a Board of Absentee Ballot Canvassers, the common council must adopt an ordinance under state statutes 7.52 and 7.53, parent 2, parent M. The ordinance is required to be, to be created at least 30 days before the election for which it would be implemented. Removing absentee ballot processing from the polling places to a centralized facility will make voting at the polling places more efficient for citizens and poll workers. Chief election inspectors will no longer need to dedicate two or more poll workers to process absentee ballots, and this will allow poll workers to be put into other positions to serve the citizens voting in person at the polls on Election Day. And the key benefits of establishing a central processing location, this is our why we want to do this. Number one is the resource optimization. Establishing a central count location will provide relief to individual polling locations and their respective poll workers. Poll workers will be able to focus on managing in-person voting, assisting voters, and ensuring a smooth Election Day experience without the added complexity of handling and processing absentee ballots. Number two, it would improve efficiency. The centralizing, the, the processing of absentee ballots will help expedite the verification and count process and reduce delays on polling, at polling locations. And number three, it will enhance security. A designated central location will ensure enhanced security measures are in place to safeguard the integrity of absentee ballots. It is important to create a Board of Absentee Ballot Canvassers before the 2026 election cycle so the board can be appointed and trained before the next November general election. For budget impact, the city would need to purchase a Badger Book server for the central location. However, this is in the city clerk's budget plan to, to purchase a Badger Book every year for that. And then by doing that, that actually frees up two Badger Books at each polling location that will, are currently being used. Staff and the election chief inspectors recommend establishing the Board of Absentee Ballot Canvassers at a central count location in the city of Platteville. Questions?
And questions?
I'm, Kathy, just for clarification, if they're deflected in a central location, how are they tabulated in the machines then?
So there, they would have a, a tabulator just like they do at the polling locations. So the central count location where we process the absentee ballots would look very much like a polling location, except there wouldn't be in-person voters. So everything that is now happening, happening at the polling location would come to, well, the council chambers, and, and we would process the absentee ballots here. They'd get checked in on the Badger Book. They'd be announced, they'd be open, they'd be entered into a tabulator, and then reconciled.
Feed them in. So, yeah, you feed them in, right? Tabulator, you're talking to, I consider the voting machine.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the tabulator. So there would be one of them? Here. Here, or wherever. Okay.
Yep.
Instead of, right now, you divide up the envelopes and send some probably to the ALSVIC and some to the BRSK, and then someone there who's working that polling place opens the envelopes and does that, and then they go in line and feed the ballot in like with your ballot. So
Correct.
Yeah, I call that the ballot eater. Like it eats it. Well, it seems a whole lot, I think it seems a whole lot more secure if you don't have to be trucking them around. Right, Tom?
Well, I want to say that I had a very interesting conversation with Colette and Clint today concerning this. And I was very impressed in how they went about establishing what would be best for the community and be best for the city to make sure that we were tabulating the counts correctly. So I give them kudos. They did a very nice job in explaining everything to me, so I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this is not on for action tonight. It would be on for action at our next meeting, the ordinance to establish a board of absentee ballot canvassers. This would not affect the February election. It would probably not affect the April election.
If it was passed for action at the next meeting, we would have that 30-day requirement met, so it, it could.
It could, if you had the equipment and stuff for the April 1st one.
Correct.
It could, okay. And then there's only that one election in 2025, and then the next elections wouldn't be until 2026.
Correct.
Right. Ken?
I think it's a very good idea. I fully support it. It's a good write-up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, any other questions on that? Otherwise, that ends our information and discussion items.